Special meeting to order. Enter into closed session under NCGS 14331811A3 to protect the attorney-client privilege and NCGS 14331811A5 regarding potential real estate acquisitions, parcels 071113031, 07111021, 07111022, 07111018B, and 0711102A. Can I get a motion?
Motion to close. Closed session.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? Let's go. Session.
Motion to close. Closed session.
All in favor? Unanimous? Recommend... Okay. I want to make... Get a motion to adjourn special meeting.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. Beautiful day and a lot of smiling faces. We're going to have some fun tonight. If we'll all stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Captain Hunky, won't you lead us tonight in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll all remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'd like to tell everybody about some upcoming events that we have coming up in the town. This, I believe it's Friday, June 16th, we have Juneteenth at Crossing Pass Park from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock. So you're... Anybody welcome to come on out? I know they have poetry reading and I had very much well planned to be there this week, but my sons surprised me with something for Father's Day. And I didn't mean to get into this, but I'm going to Chapel Hill on Thursday and I'm going to be in the Montross camp for basketball camp for no other reason other than my four grandchildren are going to be there and I get to meet all the Tar Hills and stay in a dorm and the whole nine yards. And I'm real excited and I didn't know about it or else I would have been there, so I'm leaving Thursday. So if you're a Carolina fan, I know you really appreciate it and if you're a Carolina hater, you really don't care, do you? So anyway, I didn't mean to get off on that. The town hall will be closed June 19th. July 4th parade is, I think, a tremendous parade and I'm looking forward to it. Big parade every year. It's going to be a little warm out there and hopefully all of you show up and we're going to have a good time. Just bring some water, make sure you stay good and hydrated. And then August 1st, we're going to have another meeting before August 1st, but we have National Light Out. And is that going to be at Crooked Creek Park or where's that going to be this year?
Chestnut.
Chestnut. Chestnut. And you know, that's for our law enforcement so we can show our respects and thank them for all that they do for us. So if you can get out there for that, that'd be great. And also, I wanted to let the council in town know that we got a note from Indian Trail Baptist Church and I'd like to read it. It says, "Dear Mayor Cohn, the English language does not contain adequate words to express my eternal gratitude for how you and the town of Indian Trail blessed me and my family. Sunday, May 28th was certainly one of the greatest highlights of my life. For the council to bestow such an honor on me is beyond a great memory, but one that encouraged our church family unbelievably. Please express my appreciation to everyone who made Mike Whitson Day a reality. Sincerely grateful, Mike Whitson." So what a great day that was and man, what a nice note that you guys... Thank you guys for coming up with that and doing that. So that's all for the upcoming events. Brings us to agenda additions and deletions. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. That brings us to presentations. Is Olivia here? Oh, she is here. Very good. Well, we're certainly glad you're here, Olivia. Hold on one second. I've got something I'd like to read for you and then I'd like for you to come up because we've got something for you. I'd like to say that we're thrilled to have you here today as going to be our grand marshal for our parade. I'd like to thank the Lions Club and the council for making such a good selection. You couldn't have made a better selection. Olivia's battle with pediatric cancer inspired the Reardon family to create and fund the Olivia Strong Foundation. The Olivia Strong Foundation recently gifted $500,000 to Novartis Health Himby Children's Hospital with a commitment to ending childhood cancer and ensuring kids with pediatric cancer can remain kids. To have Olivia Reardon as our grand marshal is an honor for the town of Indian Trail and come on up and we have something for you. Counsel, if you would, come on down. I think it'd be... We'd like to get our picture made with you. Is that okay?
Yeah, there you go.
People, the death of having... Come on, we will move down here in the middle so we can all get in.
Look at that.
My bless. Where do you guys school? I think...
She'll be going up to Sun Valley.
Oh, beautiful. We're going to have some fun with that. I'm guaranteeing that. Thank you, Olivia. We're happy to have you. Next, man, this is a great day today. I'm telling you, we've got some people that have done some really great things. Next, we have a certificate of recognition for Nicole Branhorst and she's a beginning teacher at Indian Trail Elementary. And I've got to spend some time over at Indian Trail Elementary and it's a great school. It really is. I did talk to your principal and I do know Ms. Lustig and I wrote down some notes that Ms. Lustig said about you that I want to say rather quickly here because I have this I want to read. But she said that you're a dynamic teacher. You're very flexible. You're kind. She always puts her students first. You're engaging in the classroom and you're a genuine person. So that's from your principal. And I know her fairly well, so she's a pretty smart girl. Whereas Nicole Branhorst joined Union County Public Schools at Indian Trail Elementary as a teacher in 2022. And whereas before coming to Indian Trail, Nicole worked at ABC Educational Services as an academic educator, providing engaging recreational opportunities and supporting emotional well-being daily to children with special needs. And whereas Nicole currently works as an exceptional children's teacher focusing on creating a positive and supportive environment for her students. And whereas Nicole devotes her time to helping them to develop their emotional well-being and gain independence, social skills, peer relationships, and self-confidence. And whereas because of Nicole's innovative spirit and enthusiasm for teaching children, Nicole was recognized as Union County's Beginning Teacher of the Year for 2023 and 2024. And whereas her dedicated service to the youth of this community deserves special recognition. Now therefore, I, David Cohn, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, on behalf of the Town Council and residents of the Town of Indian Trail, deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend our sincere thanks for Nicole's dedicated service to the children of our community. Thank you. Counsel, let's do it all once again. We don't get these honors very often. And I was going like this and my grand... I got a one-year-old grandchildren child and she does that and I said, "I'm doing that like this." And listen, I appreciate your time. Thank you for what you do. Let me tell you... Can I tell them how it works? I can? First-year teacher, 22-years-old. I mean, where do you go for here? I mean, where's the next year? You know, you'll be the teacher, the best teacher you speak to. You know, thank you especially for what you do. And we're very proud. She's strong in Indian Trail. And she went to Shallow, Sun Valley Middle, and Sun Valley High School. So we're good people here and you make us look smarter, thank you. Well, that's fun. I enjoy doing that. It's... Okay. Now we have new business. Club Pilates Indian Trail. Amanda Maloney is a regional manager and I've met Amanda before. Amanda, come on up and tell us what you do.
All right. So I think it's important to tell you what I do, but tell you kind of where I started. So a couple of years ago, I was a stay-at-home mom, been at home with my kiddos for eight years straight. I'm like, I need something for me. And so that's kind of when Club Pilates came into my life. So I went to my first intro class, sat down on my reformer. There was one other lady in the class with me. She was 90-years-old. So I look at her, I'm like, why are you starting this now? Like kind of late in life. But she's like, you know what? My goal is to just be able to walk unassisted. And that was such a powerful moment for me. And from then on out, when I got on the reformer, I was like, this piece of equipment is magic. So we are so excited to come to Indian Trail. The residents so far have been so warm and so welcoming and it's been awesome. So we're going to be opening July 6th in the Sun Valley area, right there in the Publix, kind of sideways to it, right next to East Coast Wings. We're going to be offering low-impact, full-body workouts, nine different class formats. We have the top of the top as far as certification goes for our instructors. They each have over 500 hours of certification. We are going to be open seven days a week. We're going to be running anywhere from 50 to 75 classes a week and we'll be open every hour on the hour with a small little break in the middle of the day. But we are so much more than Pilates. It's important to us to instill a culture of community. We have lots of people that come just for friendships, just for networking, just to have something for them. So we are so excited and to just get started, I have these brochures I'll leave with you guys. It has our number on the back. You just give us a call and you guys, if you reference this meeting here tonight, we'll give you 10% off your membership for life. So thank you so much for being so warm and welcoming. Thank you so much for inviting me. I'm like so excited. So I'm going to give you guys, if it's okay, give you guys these brochures so you can learn a little bit about us.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Did you tell us where you were located?
Yeah, Sun Valley. I'm going to eat cause wings.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, we'll go have some wings and go over to have Pilates at the same time.
Although it is dangerous, the Shoku is next to us too and they're... But what I offer is for everybody, all fitness levels. So our member range is literally from 14 to age 90. You can turn it anytime. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have something for you all, sir?
Nice.
Let's get in the middle so we can get some of the counsel or all we can, as much as much else as we can. Y'all come on the road. Come on, ask them. You can title this picture before. Come on, I can see us. Okay. Acknowledge public comment rules by addressing council. You acknowledge that you've read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. Okay. First up is Michael Falkenberry.
Good evening. Want to remind you tomorrow is Flag Day and what that flag represents. In early May, I sent an email to all of the council and to the mayor suggesting naming the playground for children with special needs after former council member Shirley Howell. I didn't get a response at all, but it seems one of you has enough time to get your picture taken with a fared all over Indian Trail. It's called very disrespectful, at least an answer, so you're going to look into it or a great idea or maybe later. Nothing. Recently, on social media, a comment was made about a tax rate change. At first, it was 15.5. Then during a council meeting, it became 17 cents. The question is, why did it change from 15.5 to 17 within a matter of a few days? And it's from the same person who made the suggestion. Another comment was made on social media in regards of, I guess, the Chester Square Park expansion, that the majority of council and the mayor lax common sense. I think that's very disrespectful as well. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. However, the same person did say in a council meeting that he did not know everything, which is probably true. I'm not... I don't know everything myself either. I remind every day of my wife of that. But again, you need to watch what you put on social media. Emotions get high and it's going to be used against you. It will. I guarantee it will. Also, the last council meeting, a comment was made that 42% of the voters voted against the park bond because they didn't like parks. That's not necessarily true either. I was the one at the Stallings Farm Department polling location handing out the flyers addressing the fact there was a tax increase June 2012. And that tax increase had paid for parks and as Mr. Maguire noted in the past, capital improvements would help pay for this building right here. The problem was some of that tax rate did go for the parks. To turn around this a few months later, you want more money for parks when you haven't spent the first money that was already allocated for it. That was part of the argument. That's why we voted, many of us voted against our park bond. Not because we didn't like parks. That's how it was done. And by the way, there was no public hearing, no public hearing whatsoever for that tax rate increase. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
John Early.
Good evening. On June 5th, Mayor Pro Tim Barber spoke at a B O C C meeting for Union County. They were considering a new pump station on the side of 74 where I live, just down the house from me. So he came up to the podium and was speaking and he mentioned that we kind of had to approve the project, talking about 800 apartments and a grocery store. We kind of had to approve it because or else we'd have gotten sued if we hadn't. And that... I heard that and I couldn't believe it. And it raised a couple of questions in my mind. One, why would the town council put itself in a position to be sued if just to approve a pro... And they had to approve a project to not get sued? How many other projects were approved because developers threatened to sue? Since the project was approved under duress, should not that approval be rescinded immediately? Because it was, according to the Mayor Pro Tim's words, it was made under duress, threat being sued. And finally, is this something maybe that the district attorney should look into? Thank you.
David? David, tell me... You tell me all... How do you pronounce your last name?
Patagemas.
Patagemas. Okay. Thank you. David Patagemas.
Good evening, counsel. David Patagemas, 805 Comoona Court. First, I just want to thank the rec department for the great fireworks. They were truly spectacular at Family Fun Night. I got involved with fireworks up north and these were just far superior to that. Briefly, I'm up here to talk about this, talk about the cut of one and a half cents of the budget to 17 cents. Based on the grant list, that cut would equal $882,000. That cut would have to come out of budget line items or would have to come out of the town surplus. To me, both are bad choices. Do we cut things like Family Fun Day and the fireworks, reduce the commitment to roads, or cut staff, which the administration has said we need to support the growing needs of the town? The one and a half cent tax cut would give a rebate of $75 to anyone owning a house valued at $500,000. That's less than $7 a month. I feel that leaving the tax rate the same and foregoing the $75 rebate probably works out to one of the best investments one could make. This $75 is an investment in the town. We each here own a piece of this town and that ownership's reflected in our home values. The administration has put together a budget that addresses the needs of a growing town, safety issues, and quality of life. This has made Indian Trail an attractive place to live to outsiders and that's evident from the demand for housing here, which results in higher values of all of our homes. If we look at this another way with an analogy, suppose you own IBM stock. You want management of IBM to make the proper decisions to grow the value of the company and make sure that the company is healthy financially. This grows the value of your investment in that stock. This is what the administration of Indian Trail has to do and it's my opinion that they are accomplishing that and they are protecting and growing our investment in the town. With the financial resources the town has, it can subsidize the budget and provide necessary services for a growing town and quality of life for many years to come. I urge the council to pass the budget as is, which will continue to support the value of the town and of our ownership in this town. Thank you.
Is it Benita Stone? Did I get it right?
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm not used to speaking in public or with a microphone, so let me know if you can't hear me. I've spent most of my working life in banking, accounting, and credit and budget and I've done some credit counseling for people. When I heard recently about some of the things that were being considered by the town council, I just got really upset. I've had a problem driving around town like everybody else has for about the last year because there's construction everywhere. Apartment complexes are going up like mushrooms. It's a total surprise. I mean, I don't know what has caused all these apartment complexes and developments, home, large home developments to be approved all at once, but it's been pretty disturbing. I go to a doctor's visit on the other side of South Park and I'm sitting there in the waiting room and the people who work in the doctor's office are discussing how disgusting the traffic is in Indian Trail. And can you believe all of this growth with no thought of infrastructure? And I remember being told when y'all were running for office that you were going to do this and it was all going to be peachy keen. Well, the peaches have spoiled. When people across the city, I have to listen to them talk about how bad it is here. I don't understand how intelligent people making the decisions you guys are making can just watch the traffic and watch the building and, you know, we can't see anything being done about the infrastructure. We can see all the building. We can see it popping up everywhere, but we can't see anything being done about the roads. And I've read about different changes, I guess about two years ago, I read about different roundabouts and things that were going to be done. I haven't seen them. Some have been done, but the ones in the areas where the, all the development is being done, I haven't seen that happen. I'm like, I feel like I'm like anybody else. I pray and I get all the information I can about all the candidates that are running for office and I vote for principals, not particularly personalities, because personalities are not going to make this place a wonderful place to live. And by the way, I've been here since 1979, so I have seen what's hap... Anyway, I'm really upset about this seven and a half million dollars and the soccer field. And I think it's unconscionable.
I'm sorry, but you have three minutes and I mean, we have to do it with everybody. So thank you.
All right. Well, I think I got my point across.
You did. Is it NOM or NAM?
It's NOM.
NOM?
Mayor Cohn and members of the council just want to say thank you so much for all you do every day for this wonderful town. Thank you so much and thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to talk about and voice my concern regarding the thing that we heard recently around the discontinuation of the 74X express bus from here to Uptown Charlotte because of funding constraint. And I've been living here in this wonderful town with my family for seven years. We love this town and one of the reasons that we moved here is that we learned that we would be able to take 74X, the bus, the public transportation to Uptown to work as well. And, you know, just hearing this and just, it's very sad, basically. And there's so many different reasons and benefits for public transportation such as, you know, doing our part to reduce pollution and saving the environment, the convenient. But one of the other important reasons for us is affordability. And my... I have an older car that I think will last me probably another couple of years and, you know, I... All right. Well, I think I got my point across.
You did. Is it Nam or NAM?
It's Nam.
Nam?
Mayor Cohen and members of the council just want to say thank you so much for all you do every day for this wonderful town. Thank you so much, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to talk about and voice my concern regarding the thing that we heard recently around the discontinuation of the 74X express bus from here to, to Uptown Charlotte because of funding constraint. And I've, I've been living here in this wonderful town with my family for seven years. We love this, this town, and one of the reasons that we moved here is that we learned that we would be able to take 74X, the bus, the public transportation to, to Uptown to work as well. And, you know, just hearing this and just, it is very sad, basically. And there's so many different reasons and benefits for public transportation, such as, you know, doing our part to reduce pollution and saving the environment, the, the convenient. But one of the other important reasons for us is affordability. And my, I have an older car that I think will last me probably another couple of years and, and, you know, I, and I'm trying to keep it and maintain it, you know, and, and using the bus transportation, you know, help with the tear and wear, hoping it would last longer because you all know that, that cars are so expensive nowadays, even a reliable one, basically. And so I'm hoping that, that, I, I know that the funding for this bus is, is being supported by, you know, other area, not only for our town, but also the town of Monroe and also Charlotte play a role into this. I'm really hoping that we can all work together to, to, to continue this, you know, vital transportation and just that when we first heard of this, we couldn't believe it, you know, we, there's, you know, there's so many employment jobs in Charlotte and there's so many activity that, that I know many people in our town and Monroe would commute to and, and, you know, not having, I think 74 bus is a probable, you know, is just one main transportation that we have, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Nam. Greg? Is it Manziel?
Mazzilli.
Mazzilli.
Yep. Sophia's dad.
Good evening, council members. My name is Greg Mazzilli. I'm a member of, I'm a resident of Indian Trail. Just like Nam spoke, I'd like to highlight the 74 Express and all it does for Indian Trail as well as Union County. Unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, we found out that Union County was going to be ending support for the 74 Express, and I'd like to highlight some of the economic development or, I'm sorry, economic benefits it brings to Indian Trail. Many of us who ride the 74 Express, we have our cars serviced at the Firestone over there at Union Town Center. We grab coffee at Scooters. A lot of us pick up groceries at Food Line after work. It'll be a big loss if the 74 is taken away and we all have to drive to Matthews and use up, and basically fund their growth, their, their, their community rather than fund our own in Indian Trail. Sorry, allergies. I wish that, I hope that the town can support the 74 Express, not fully, but in cooperation with Union County and keep it going for much, much longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Abiar?
Abiar, yeah, close enough.
Clint?
Hi there. Just like my, my two friends and colleagues, I also ride the 74X. I think they've already discussed how it's beneficial to Indian Trail, have people shopping in our businesses there. We all know it's better for the environment. We should all be on public transportation. Every community should be supporting public transportation. But I'd also like to just make an admission to the council here today is that I am what you would call a cautious driver, which is great at 8:00 PM on a Sunday when people aren't as anxious as they are in rush hour, but I find myself, I'm a nuisance if I have to make that drive into Charlotte. I'm the one that's in the way. People are frustrated. I'm nervous. I'm white knuckling it all the way if I have to drive into Charlotte during rush hour. I don't feel safe. I also care for an elderly parent. I get sketchy amounts of sleep. I'm tired when I get up in the morning. I've got a four-minute drive to get to that 74X stop, and I can let a professional safely get me to Charlotte, which is better for everybody in Union County and McComber County alike. And just to get to the 70, 64X, the express that's in Matthews, that's a really congested area of Union County. Anybody that leaves Union County in the morning going through, trying to get up to the area of Matthews where the Sam's Club and, and all that is, that's, that's half the battle right there. It's there and then all the way to the center city, right, are your two biggest battles. So personally, I just think, I'm probably not the only tired driver in the morning, but I'm, I'm beat every single morning. I'm running on exhaustion every single day, which everybody that's caring for young people or elderly people is the same, and I think we're all safer on public transportation. I feel like I'm doing everybody a favor when I put myself on that bus. I don't care about flexibility of movement when I'm up there. I will wait for the next bus to take me home, but just wanted to throw that out there. So hopefully, everybody will consider supporting that 74X. It's vital for a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is it, boy, this one's a real good one. Balasha? How close did I get to that?
Not even close.
Would you come up and say your full name, please?
Balaji Srinivasan.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the council for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you. As Lady and Cynthia said and one said, I'm here to make sure that we can continue the 74X service. I've been using that for close to 15 years or so. I'm at the time. I can still relate to that and do, I did my higher education, I did my MBA. I might ask, what did you do, how did you do the MBA? I was able to study doing a full-time job, trying to find some time. I was able to take the advantage of the commute time, do my assignments, homework, whatever the case may, I was able to do that, my MBA. So I did it from 2016 till 2019. I passed it up from the UNC with 3.84 GPA score. So that was very helpful. Thank you. And I can go on and on. And the benefits of public transportation are great. It improves, as they mentioned, the local community, the local businesses, and as well as the stress personally and everything, right? I understand the ridership issue, which has been challenging coming out of COVID, right? Ridership and the corporate up in the, I can tell from the Bank of America where we work, we have been asked to come three days a week, right? So, so we are not fully there yet, so it's, time will take over a period of time. They may go for a five-day week or a three-day week, so the ridership is fluctuating as I speak today, right? So it may catch up. So you need to consider that. Maybe we don't need to have a big bus like what we currently have, like an Academy bus, maybe go for a shorter bus. The point is, that's not, let's not kill this 74X. Let's not discontinue that. That's the important point. Let's have maintained some kind of a public transportation from here, from Union County to Uptown. It's really helpful. I don't need to tell about the environment benefits, improve the community health, stress, reclaim the community, and congestion. One of, one of the main things which people of Indian Trail complain about is the congestion, road congestion, just mentioned, right? So this, having a bus, you don't have 10 cars driving, rather just one bus driving. So, yep, and I think if you have any questions, you can reach me at my cell number after that. Thank you for your time. Once again, I hope you can continue the service. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Newell. Not currently an Indian Trail resident, but I'm just about as close as you can get being at the end of Airport Road, about a half mile from Wesley Chapel where my wife actually teaches. But I'm fifth generation Union County, third generation Indian Trail. I was born and raised here where my parents still live right behind Indian Trail First Baptist. My father actually served on this very town council for a number of years when I was growing up. I still remember riding in the parade, right behind the truck that had the jazz band on it, you know, where they always made sure to put us right there so we could have a little party. But I'm also second generation Katz. Not just my dad and me, but my sister, who's also lives in Indian Trail. And, you know, for me, it was a, a kind of given. I saw my dad grow up, drive a Chevy pickup truck for 25 years because of all the miles and the gas that he didn't have to put on it. I saw him be the dad who could come home at night and not be white-knuckled, you know, crazy traffic, walk through the door to two kids who had no clue what traffic stress would mean. All they cared about was daddy's home. I want to go tackle his legs. And he could be ready for that because he decompressed from the day. So when my wife and I had our first chance to get a house, I was actually, I worked for Corning out on 601 before they had to mothball that plant for a while. So I was actually working two part-time jobs when God dropped the opportunity in our laps for a house, but my wife said, what are you going to do if a company in Charlotte hires you? And it was, it was an instantaneous answer. I'm going to ride the bus just like my dad did, and it's what I've done for almost 20 years. So the one thing that many of you may not know, as a 20-year driver, my dad with another 12 years, you know, before that, so I mean, we're nearly 30 years as a family, riding, riding these buses. What you may not know when you look at the number studies that they give is, we used to have four routes on that bus, and we were pretty packed the last time that Union County kind of got their, their knickers in, in a wad and decided that they weren't sure they were going to fund it the way they wanted to. So everything got cut back to three routes. We went to standing room only. There was one week I stood five different times riding that bus. One day it was going and coming. And I can still remember people saying, I'm sick and tired of standing up on a bus. I'm going to do something else. So Katz lost riders. When they went to three routes, they also dropped the final sort of outbound route. So instead of having an almost six o'clock, you now had a 5:30. Some people I knew said, eh, I can't risk it. That 5:30 meeting may not end on time. I can't be stuck downtown. So they lost riders. And then we come back out of COVID, drop from three to two. Now, if you happen to be a city worker or somebody who needs to be at work at 8:00 AM, you can't do it. You can get there at 7:15 and twiddle your thumbs for 45 minutes, or you can get there at 8:15 and get fired. You also can't leave work at 5:15. You can get out of there at 4:40 or 5:40. Those are your two choices. So the ridership numbers you're getting aren't necessarily accurate because between the county and Katz, they very steadily whittled away at the options that people have. And I, I think the only way you're going to really improve that is to continue to support it, but potentially even add some things back. So, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, that concludes the public comments. Thank all of you for coming up here and speaking today. Does the council have any comments back? Mr. Gay?
I do. To the gentleman that spoke about reducing the tax rate, be aware of someone running for office that has been sitting here for four years and never mentioned a tax, a tax decrease. And to Ms. Stone, the things that are going up right now were not during this, this council, but we do know that we need roads. In fact, it was disturbing to me when we took $4.3 million of our money and bought fire trucks that we continue to be taxed by and are paying for by our county fire taxes. And there was no negotiation at all. If you go back to reducing the property tax here, they didn't, I pay $300 a year in fire tax, and we're paying double for fire tax, for fire trucks. I understand the issues with the traffic. We could have used that $4.3 million for the highways, but I think somebody was trying to buy votes to be reelected. So be, always look and see what somebody votes for. The gentleman that's been pushing this, last year voted for almost 1,000 apartment complexes and townhouses between Lowe's and the theater. Just think about what that's going to do to Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. Now, seven and a half million dollars that they're saying is for the, for the soccer field, I've been telling them to quit saying that. It's not true. Way overinflated. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd just like to say thanks for everybody for speaking, and I just want to say that I understand about the 74. I'd like to see it. I'd like to see Indian Trail participate in that because it's, it's needed. I think it's needed, and the one thing that I think that we need to do more of is advertise it more because I don't think a lot of people know that, that you can do it, that you can get on that bus and ride it to Charlotte. And for every one of you that ride that bus, there's one less car I got to worry about when I drive, drive in and, and, you know, I think it's, it saves us in the long run. But anyway, I think it's going to come up later on and, anyway, thank you for coming here to speak. That's the way, that's the way we get things accomplished, is to hear the public come up and talk. So thank, thank you, everybody. That brings us to our law enforcement. Cap and Hunky?
Good job, Mr. Mayor, for pronouncing my name correctly. You butchered everybody else's, but you nailed mine. No news is good news again from Union County Sheriff's Office. We were having a great time here. One thing I do want the council to spread the word, to remember that school is out. Kids are out in the streets, and make sure when we're driving through the neighborhoods that we are very cautious of kids on bicycles and everything. And also, please remind everybody, I want to remind everybody to lock your cars. Anything valuable, please take it out of the car and lock your cars, because this is the season for car break-ins, not only just from the, you know, kids being mischievous, but, you know, people coming from, out of our beautiful area to come shop in our beautiful area, you know, it's, people say, well, I live in a nice, safe neighborhood. Yes, you do, and it's a great place for criminals to shop. So again, just remind everybody to please lock your cars and take your valuables out. And that's all I got. Do you have any questions for me?
Cap, my guy, just want to thank y'all for Family Fun Day. Y'all did an unbelievable job out there directing traffic. I saw Kearney out, Kearney did not go home. He stayed out there all day long.
I think he's still there, to be honest with you. I think he's still, and he's so, yeah, and again, I will echo, I don't remember who said it about the fireworks, but they were, they were gorgeous. I think you and I were standing there enjoying them together. They were, they were very good, so.
Absolutely, the best, the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, brings us up to public hearing. By addressing council, you acknowledge that you've read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. The Shops at Hanfield, ZM 2023 0072. Ms. Deese?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our first public hearing for tonight is the Shops at Hanfield Phase 3. As the mayor mentioned, it's ZM 2023 0072. This is for a conditional rezoning request. So a little bit about the request, we're looking at one parcel of land. It's about 4.5 acres off of Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. This is behind the Publix across from the newer Taco Bell in Sun Valley. Currently is a vacant and wooded lot. A little bit of a history of this shopping center, the initial development was in 2015. Phase one is built out. Phase two is actually, has received site plan approval, and this is phase three that you're considering tonight. And the applicant is the Moser Group with Mr. Scott Hunzucker representing the Moser Group tonight. So here's a photo, just an aerial view. As you can see, Sun Valley Commons over here, the movie theater, you've got Publix and the Shops at Hanfield all along in this area. This is a street view looking into the property. And then let's talk a little bit more about details here. So the neighboring properties are predominantly commercial, general business district. There is to the northeast residential property, but it is for sale with commercial intent for those parcels. Comprehensive plan calls for this area to be mixed use, and this parcel also falls within the subregional activity center. The current commercial developments are thriving, and parcels fronting Wesley Chapel Stouts are no longer ideal for single family. This is the existing zoning, so you can see in the kind of darker blue area, this is your general business district, which is what they're requesting here tonight, and you can see in the beige area, the SF1 that's currently present on the property. Future land use calls for this area to be mixed use, which plays along well with all that's going on in the area. And our consistency statement, so this proposed rezoning is reasonable and it's in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and land use and housing. Economic development by creating a more balanced tax base and promoting a diverse local economy. Land use and housing, it promotes a variety of land uses and avoids potential land conflicts. Land use and housing goal number six, it encourages investments in the community. So following public comment and council discussion, the requested action is before you tonight. The applicant does not have a formal presentation, but is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Does anybody have any questions? Well, with that being said, I'd like to open this portion to, to public comment, and I don't believe we have any public comment on that. So can I get a motion to open public comment?
You have a motion to open public comment?
All in favor? Unanimous. Now can I get a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
All in favor? Okay, any council deliberation? Anybody want to talk about anything? Okay, so I need a motion. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment request, ZM 2023-0072, the Shops at Hanfield, Phase 3, ordinance number 386. shops at Hanfield Phase Three, ordinance number 386 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Can I get a motion to adopt the consistency findings?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for ZM 2023-0072.
All in favor? Okay. The next the next one we have is 112 Woodland Road, ZM 2023 0075. Ms. Deese.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask if you could open the public hearing for this request and recess it to the June 27, 2023 meeting due to a conflict with the attorney representing this case. The City of Monroe has a town council meeting tonight as well, and that attorney had a rezoning there, so he would like to postpone it until the 27th, if possible.
Does anybody have any problems with that? Nope. Okay, well, can I get a a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing for 112 Woodland Road-ZM 2023-0075.
I had to recess to it.
All in favor?
I had to recess to it for the 27th.
No, I'm gonna do that next. Go ahead.
Okay. Motion to recess the public hearing for 112 Woodland Road-ZM 2023-0075 until the June 27, 2023 town council meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous. Now I'd like to have a motion to ask to have a recess it till, is it next the next meeting or when is?
She just did that. We're good.
She just did.
Okay. Can I get that motion?
She just did.
We did it already. I thought we were supposed to do it in two different motions. So you, oh, you did the recess. Gotcha. Mr. McIntyre interfered. Which, let me just ask, which way did you want to do it? Which way were we?
We're good. We can move on to the next one if you're okay with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, that brings us, let's move on. Let's go to the the next one, Younts Road, ZM 2023 0076. Ms. Deese.
All right, let's do it. So this is the final public hearing for tonight. This request is for 10 parcels totaling 2.87 acres along Younts Road. It's across the intersection from Union Prep Academy, and it's requested to go single family to general business district. That's kind of the trend here lately, and we're excited about that. So the intent is to develop the property with a building to accommodate building and office, and the applicant is Cam Helms. Got a couple of photos here for you. So there is one vacant structure, residential structure on the property. And then this is just looking out from the property to Union Prep Academy. This is into the property along Brown Lane and Manus Drive. And then one more for a street view along Younts. This is the aerial. You can see this is the Rosemary Park area. You can see Metrolina over here, and then again, Union Prep. The existing zoning in beige is that SF1. You can see we got some GBD right here to play off of. And then the future land use map does designate this as low density residential, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So a few more details of the request, the neighboring properties to the north and south are zoned SF1 with some being vacant. Union Prep's across Younts Road, and also Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf is adjacent to the school and zone general business district. So properties to the west are zoned FF1 SF1 but have institutional land use due to the expansion of Metrolina Christian Academy. And again, the comp plan calls this out to be low density residential. However, most of the lots are very small platted lots within Rosemary Park, and they either do not perk or they do not have the space to accommodate a septic field. It also doesn't make financial sense for one one property owner that owns one small lot to make the investment to move the infrastructure to extend sewer. And so that's been problematic, which is why you've seen a lot of these lots. They're very, very old, but very little development in this area. So the comp plan also calls for Younts Road to be a four-lane boulevard, which would, again, support the elimination of single family along Younts. And we also have the US 74 West corridor plan that mentions office employment uses with supporting retail as a component, and this request supports that cause as well. The other thing that I would like to mention is that along with the non-residential uses across the street, what we've also seen is that with the super street on 74, and I can attest, I personally use it all the time, Younts has become a cut through to avoid the the left turns on 74. So it's a lot busier than than it was several years ago. Consistency statement, so the proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and infrastructure. Economic development in the fact that it creates a more balanced tax base, promotes a diverse local economy. And then infrastructure goal number one, expand, improve public and private utilities such as water, sewer, stormwater, electric, natural gas, and communications infrastructure throughout the community. Again, following any public comment and council discussion, the requested action is before you tonight. The applicant is also present if there are any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Gay?
So there's no plans at all here on what they are going to, to show us what they want to do?
This is just a zoning map amendment, so no concept plan. We have seen, staff has seen some plans on a variety of like flex buildings, office kind of use. However, the plans are really dependent on the sewer allocation.
So there's no single-family homes going here, or are there?
No, no single-family. This is strictly commercial.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? You have Marcus?
Can you touch on the Metrolina thing you mentioned? You mentioned there was some restriction in terms of?
If I can get, you can actually see in the aerial where Metrolina has, I have to give the pastor at First Baptist credit, he has slowly along the years acquired these lots, and it's enabled Metrolina to construct track and field, soccer fields, and things like that. Some of that's under construction currently, and you can you can see some of that in the aerial.
Okay, so that so that's the limitations then in that some of these, not this one in question in yellow, but the other ones may be subject to Metrolina expanding and basically buying them up. That's what you were alluding to?
Correct. Right, and I think that helps make the case that those obviously aren't going to be residential, so it helps support this rezoning case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, if we don't have any other questions, can I, can we open the for public hearing? Can I get a a motion?
Motion to open public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. I do not believe we have any. We do not have anything, so can I get a motion to? Okay, you didn't sign up, but council, do you?
I couldn't find it. Been driving all around, finding, finding.
Oh, that's okay. With council permission, she can come up.
We can suspend the rules and allow her to speak.
Suspend the rules and allow you to come up. Look, okay.
I'm Sandra Madsen, and I live on Brown Lane, right across from the school, and we have the walking trails and everything with Metrolina, and we've been there for about 10 years. I love the area. My concern when I found out about the rezoning or the idea of rezoning is I'm very concerned because of the two schools in the area, and I'm just in hopes that if it does get voted in to be commercial, that there'll be some good thought into what exactly is going to be, you know, be commercial on that road near near those schools. The four-way, four-way lane on Younts Road is another concern. Since I, you know, I mentioned I've been there for almost 10 years. When we first moved there, there was very little traffic, and and now it seems like usually at night, I mean, it's like, it sounds like a Speedway, a racetrack. I mean, it's really, I mean, we hear these loud muffler cars and people zooming through there pretty much on the weekend and sometimes during the week, and that's a concern, too. I know I can't stop progress. I understand that. I know you like a strong tax base and consider commercial property, but I just hope that if you do decide to make it commercial, that you'll be very careful as to what's going to go on that road with those two wonderful schools that are next there.
Thank you.
Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Brandy, you did touch, but you did say what you thought was was going to be there, and I'm not sure she heard that. You did you did hear it?
I did not.
Okay, if you'll.
Sure, so I'd be happy to clarify a couple of things, maybe that would make her feel a little bit better. The comp plan calls out for Younts Road to be a four-lane boulevard. However, it is an NCDOT roadway, and it is not on their radar at all. We know how long it takes once it gets in their process. So that would be a long, long time down the road, for sure. The propose, the proposal for this was for building similar to what you see on Post Office Drive, if you're familiar with those. So it would be light use, some flex space, just really not a lot of traffic in and out. But it would go through the site plan approval process, so the traffic would be looked at. It would be evaluated by NCDOT and our engineering department to see if it needed a traffic study.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming back up to verify that.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, is the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Would they, I mean, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I don't want to speak out of turn, but would the applicant want to speak a little bit just in terms of what they think that they want to put there, just so that way as a council, we can make an educated decision? I hate to put you on the spot, but you are here. Thank you, Mayor.
No, not a problem. My name's Bryce Demetrotk, representing the applicant this evening. As of right now, we are looking at like what Brandy's had, some flex space. We don't have any businesses in particular that we have going in, but it's more of trying to do a flex area where those that go to the school, the parents could work right there, be able to pick up the kids that are right there, and kind of bring a better area to Indian Trail.
All right. Thank you. And and I think you probably know it's going to probably be a while before you would be able to even put anything in there that I'm assuming.
So with the 10 acre or the 10 parcels that we have, we have the ability to do septic on a couple of them, and that's kind of the whole purpose of having so many parcels. But to get sewer to that is going to be a little bit more of a challenge.
Right, so at least you're, I want, you were aware of that.
Yes, yes, we are aware of that.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, may I address Councilmember McIntyre's concern?
Sure.
If this is rezoned general business, then it has a use by right, so any uses in that category would be allowed on it. I mean, they stopped to go through site plan and traffic and all of the conditions that Ms. Deese stated, but even if you said these are the offices we want to put on there, anything that's allowed per that use could be potentially put there.
Another question. Mr. Gay? Have you checked if it perks the land?
Yes, we have.
It does perk?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're looking at a couple of septic tanks. One thing about it, if you don't have sewer there and you're going to use septic tanks, you're automatically going to have to have low density in what you do.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Would they have to come to council to get their project approved? Or what's the terminology you just used, Marcus?
It would be used by right.
So he could do whatever he wants there, basically?
Not not whatever he wants. It still has to comply with our ordinances, our setbacks, everything in that general business district, but because it's not a conditional rezoning, so there's not specific conditions that it be a specific type of building or a specific use. The use is not tied to the rezoning.
Did did we close public? No, we did not. Now, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, well, since everybody got their questions answered, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment request, ZM 2023-0076.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Oh, sorry, I should have added Younts Road rezoning ordinance number 388 as presented. Trina, that's for you. I apologize.
That's okay.
I missed that piece there. And I'll make a second motion to adopt the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for ZM 2023-0076.
All in favor? Melody, do I need to go over the first motion again since since Mr. McIntyre left it out, the the 388 presented?
I think we're fine.
We're good? All right, we're good. Very good. Thank you, Brandy. What now? Sure, let's take a five-minute break, if you don't mind. Five-minute means five minutes. At, we're now in the old business, project updates. Mr. McLaurin is going to take over from Mr. McLamb tonight. Mr. McLamb is having a graduation tonight for his, well, is at a graduation, I think, for his, one of his daughters.
Correct.
Okay, is she graduating college or high school?
I think it's high school.
Porter Ridge.
Porter Ridge.
Well, congratulations.
Can you cut the input volume down a little bit, Bobby? There you go. Yes, families, kids grow up so quickly, so when Adam told me that, I said, you go, you go take care of that. That's a really important thing in life. So if you look on page 70 of your agenda package, I want to talk about a couple of things with the ARPA that we're doing. The first item is some of the additional funds related to stormwater. If you remember when we got the $12 million in from Washington, part of that was for stormwater. And so we are proposing that we do several things, that we do six culvert replacements, 12 major culvert clearings, two stormwater projects, several BMP rehabs on the town properties. Later on in your agenda, Mr. Hunzinger will bring you a proposal that we'll ask you to approve, and we'll use those dollars for that service. One of the things you did really well last year when you got this money, you agreed to use money to pay for the sheriff's office contract. It saved us a whole lot of red tape. And by doing that, we discussed last year, and we want to do it again this year, and next year is to use that Washington money or that federal money to pay for the sheriff's office contract. Okay, we're all on board with that. When we did that, it freed up local, what we call local money or surplus dollars, and over the last year, y'all have made a number of good investments in your community, from athletic associations to the VFWs. Some of you were at the VFW for, I think, Memorial Day, and you saw some of your handiwork there, Food for Families, Common Heart, Cameron's Heart, House of Hope, Union West Rotary, Lions Club, mini bus for town use with parks and wrecks and and generators. And the generators, as you can see right to the right of us, are laying the pad now, and we're also doing it at the sheriff's office. Yes, sir.
That money that was freed up for the sheriff's contract freed up that money for the fire trucks also.
Right.
That we were able to use that money, government money that we would have had to spend for the sheriff's office went for those fire trucks, right? Thank you.
All right, so anyway, so this is what we do. This is what we need your help on because we've talked about it, and I think this is the third time we've brought it to your attention. We need some direction on the FY24 money outside of our obligation, okay? We want to use roughly $2.1 million of the remaining funds after we pay for the sheriff's office contract and the fire department, excuse me, after paying for the second of two payments for the fire trucks and the sheriff's office facilities upgrade, we want to use the rest of that estimated $2.1 million to go to a community center. This is first part for FY24. The second part that we want to do is, as you know, we've had idle funds sitting there earning. we've had idle funds sitting there earning interest over this period of time. We would like to use those idle funds or the interests that has, it has generated, estimated to be $300,000, to go to outside agencies. Later on in this meeting, I'll talk about the 74X bus, and perhaps we could use some of that money. But we just need to get some direction on what you want to do in FY '24. In FY '25, we would like you to use the remaining $1.8 million surplus funds after the facility upgrade to also go to the community center.
Mr. McIntyre?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, or manager, or Melody, one of you. I'd like to make, if, I'd like to make a motion, council can also discuss it as well. But if it's fine, I'd like to make a motion on this. Would you prefer, Mr. Mayor, that I make the motion now, or you prefer that they have the discussion?
I think you ought to live, council talk, you know, council discussion on it first, but thank you. If you are finished.
Yes, I'm finished.
Raise your hand if you want, if you've got any comments. Mr. Barber?
Is this a motion, or just, you're just looking direction?
We're looking for direction, but if you give us a motion, that will give us a little bit more firm direction.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Right, and the package, just like you were recommending $2.1 million this coming fiscal year and $1.8 million the next fiscal year for a community center, correct?
Correct, and I know you potentially have a new board next year, but with a strong recommendation that you put that money towards community center also. Yes.
Can you designate that with a new board coming in?
I mean, you cannot tie hands of future boards, but if you, and it depends if you're using cash, if you enter in some sort of loan agreement or a contract. I mean, you can be obligated to make payments in future years.
Well, I realize we're, we have to designate the money in a certain amount of time, and then we have to spend the money in a certain amount of time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the rest of what you heard, I didn't hear all what you said, so I'm sorry, but, you know, but what I like to see is we get moving on a $2.1 for community center this fiscal, coming fiscal year. And then we do the $1.8 million for roads to speed up the, for roads we had to study on, to speed up repaving schedule to that. That's what I like to see, and if anybody wants to, you know. And then we're going to, then use the investment money. I don't know what we're designating that on. Maybe we're going to do part of that for the transit, I'd be for that, so.
Any other questions?
And if he wants to make a motion, I don't know what the motion is, but I'm just, yeah, so I'm okay with a motion, if you want to.
Well, and I think the point made is that, if I understand the motion, I understand what was said. And all probability, and a future council can change it anyway. Is that, am I correct or not correct to say that the 2025?
For 2025 funds, correct.
Right.
Unless you're, unless you're in some sort of binding contract.
Gotcha, okay. All right, if, do I have any other comments? Marcus, if you want to present the motion, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the ARPA surplus funds available as of July 2023, which is fiscal year 2024, in the amount of $2.1 million US dollars be allocated in a fund for the Indian Trail Community Center.
Okay.
And in addition to that, the funds, the available funds, which would be, which would be available in July 2024 for fiscal year 2025, with the intent of allocating these monies before the lapse period occurs, of $1.8 million to go towards the funding of road repavement construction in the town of Indian Trail.
Okay, if you'd recommend that.
Okay, that's your motion, all in favor? Unanimous?
Okay, I have one question, Mr. Mayor. My presumption is that the interest that is earned in both fiscal years would go to outside agencies?
So I can add that to the motion, sir, if you want?
Yes.
For, just to ensure?
Right.
So I'll pick back up the motion, and I'll say that the interest earned during that period, including the $300,000 that has earned to date, approximate, that it be used to fund the outside agencies, including items that the council deems necessary or valid.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I did not hear that motion at all.
It's the same motion as he had before, but they're taking the $300,000 and using it for outside agencies.
Okay, I'm okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that.
All in favor? Unanimous? Unanimous.
Thank you, yes, sir, appreciate it. All right, the next item you've got is an interlocal agreement with CARPO for the transportation master plan. This was a grant that you got in the amount of $150,000 with the town, excuse me, yeah, a total of $150,000 with CARPO picking up $120,000, the town picking up $30,000 match is for updating your transportation plan. The document that is in your agenda is basically the contract, and the attorney has reviewed it. Unless she has any comments, or you have any comments, we would ask for approval.
Any comments on that? Can I get a motion? Do you want, I guess you do want a motion, we do want a motion on that.
Yes, sir, authorized to enter into the agreement.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with CRTPO for the transportation master plan in the amount of $150,000, with CRTPO contributing $120,000, and the town of Indian Trail contributing $30,000.
All in favor? Unanimous?
The next item, upgrade radio service. This is something we spoke to you about last meeting. They're always changing the walkie-talkies that we use or the radios we use, and there's been a big movement, a push, since September 11th, 2001, for interoperability among agencies and even across counties. As part of the standard, radio standard change, if we don't change our radios out by January 1st, 2025, we cannot use our radios to communicate with our neighboring agencies, including the county. Given delivery time and things of that nature, Adam has requested, and I agree, that we appropriate $60,000 out of contingency to go ahead and place an order for 14 radios. 10 would be handheld units, and four would be truck mounted units.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
To approve the use of contingency funds in the amount of $60,000 for the purchase of new radios?
All in favor? Unanimous?
The next item will be handled by Mr. Hunt-Singer.
Mayor, council, as you, as you heard earlier from a town manager, we had designated a couple of million dollars to try to use from the ARPA fund for stormwater projects. And unfortunately, while we were doing analysis to try to get some of our larger culverts in our, on town streets to be replaced, four out of five of those culverts have utility conflicts, so it's not just going to be an easy remove, replace, and kind type of project. So we're going to have to go and dive deeper into a design of all four of those. And so unfortunately, we couldn't meet that threshold of spending that kind of, that amount of money this year. So what we did was, we, we took several culverts that we have, we always pipe, so, in case y'all don't know, we always pipe video culvert crossings before we resurface the road, because we want to make sure that any road crossing that's been sitting there for several years doesn't have any defects in it before we pave. Obviously, we don't want to go back and patch back roadway for culvert fills that's recently been paved. So we have designated several culverts to be replaced, and we also included the Poplin Glen Improvement Project that y'all talked, we've talked about for over a year, year and a half now. We include that in this project as well. And so what we did was, we advertised basically a stormwater improvements project, very general title, included those projects in there, and combined all together, and advertised, prebid everything per federal standards. And we just had bid opening today at 2:00. And I got two bids, and one bid came in at $431,438.58, which is in line with our engineer's estimate of $457,655, I mean, sorry, $457,655.11. And so I'm here tonight to ask y'all to approve a notice of award to Carolina Wetland Services for that contract. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended grant ordinance for the town of Indian Trail Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Ordinance Number 31 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous?
That was actually the second item. Right? There's two, there's two items. One's the notice, notice of award, and the second would be to do the budget amendment.
Okay, I'm looking at my motion sheet, and that's the first one I have. So, all right, so let me make the second motion first, and the first motion second.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the notice of award to Carolina Wetland Services Incorporated in the amount of $431,438.58 for the noted stormwater improvement projects.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
And then I'll make a motion to approve the amended grant project ordinance for the town of Indian Trail Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Ordinance Number 31 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Mr. McLaurin? 2023 budget ordinance?
We're at the end of the trail, folks. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the budget ordinance. The budget ordinance is the document which legally allows your budget to be put into place. It's really important that we approve the budget ordinance tonight, because as I mentioned to you earlier, once you approve the budget ordinance, we have to start a process of closing down the current fiscal year, opening up the new fiscal year, starting to set up for the audit while we're paying bills and processing paperwork on a daily basis. This is the same budget ordinance that was presented to you on May 9th, provided to you a cover memo which identifies the 11 sections of what the budget ordinance is. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, do I have any questions? Anybody? No questions?
Yes, what is, and I thought there might be some discussion on this. We have five, what was presented to you on May 9th was 5% for the employees and 5% for the council.
Is there a way to remove the council?
We could, that is a minor tweak, and I could ask our well-versed finance director, Mr. Waddawitz, to come up here and tell you what that would look like. And if that is acceptable to you, then he would read in the new, the new figures.
Okay, and I would like to count, is anybody else interested in that?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up, if you would, Jim.
Thanks, Mike. So, yeah, the impact. So we would have called for the employees and taken off for the council. It's a, it's a savings of about $5,600, Crystal.
I understand you're right, Jim, you said that would be about a $5,600 savings?
Yes.
Okay.
Reduction. And anticipation, I had worked up a new ordinance.
Okay, now, can you do that now, or?
Yeah, I'd like to pass it out now. Sure. So the new budget amount now, we, our budget, our general fund budget now balances at $21,859.936. And that reflects the $5,000 reduction. No impact on stormwater, no impact on POW bill, no impact on debt service, capital reserve.
Very good. Any questions? Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. Last year, somebody put in a 16% increase for us on council. So I think that there's no way that we should have an increase this year.
With that being said, is there any other questions on the budget? Anybody would like to question any, anything else? We're good, all right. So, Mr. McLaurin, if you'd like to get back up here. And I guess we need a motion to approve or deny the budget ordinance as presented?
As presented, yes, sir.
As with the, without the 5% for the council?
With the, with the adjustment, the reduction of $5,600, yes.
Right. I wrote it, I wrote it down. Okay, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve FY '23-24 budget ordinance as amended with the $5,600 reduction.
All in favor? We've got Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, Mr. B. Hallack in favor, all deny. Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Barber against. That passes three to two.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Brings us up to our appointment. And we did have a couple of, well, I'll get to that when we get to the chairman of, I think we had a couple of recommendations. The first one up is the ABC Board. I am the chairman of the ABC Board. I didn't make any recommendations because I didn't know about any of these others, and I didn't want to recommend myself. So, Mr. McIntyre?
Sorry, I want to make a recommendation, sorry. I can go ahead?
Sure.
All right, so just a little history, please bear with me for a second. I've been over here in the town since 2018, serving on this council. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to serve here, representing the citizens. I have a very clear memory of the ABC Board at a time where they were not necessarily cooperating with the town. The information that they were providing was few, if any at all, was very little information. And the town, being us, sitting up here, representing the people, we have a vested interest in what the ABC does. We do not manage the day-to-day of the ABC store, but we do have a vested interest, because at the end of the day, they make a contribution to the town. It is the people's money, it goes to fund various things within the town. So it's something that we're very, you know, we want to keep a keen eye on. I think it's in the town's best interest to have somebody on the council, preferably somebody without, who does not necessarily have a vote at every meeting unless there's a tie representing the town. Mayor Cohen has been serving on that ABC Board during that short time. I've seen the cooperation and the contributions to the town improve dramatically. And it is my recommendation that we, nominate, that I would like to nominate David Cohen back to the ABC Board, as he would protect the town's interests, but also keep the ABC town, the ABC store going, making sure that they're doing business well, and that the contributions do come to the town.
Thank you, Marcus. Anybody else have any recommendations? With that being said, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to appoint David Cohen to seat number one on the ABC Board effective July 1, 2023. Yeah, I make a motion to appoint, uh, David Cohen to seat number one on the ABC Board effective July one, twenty twenty-three with a term ending of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank y'all. I do, I want to make a quick statement. I will not, um, I, I don't want to be paid for it this time. I would, I would either like to take the money and donate, and donate it to Jim. If I can donate it to a charity, I'd be happy to do that. Um, I, I, I do feel a little obligated to the, to the ABC Board because it's, I'll, I'll try to be quick. We do oversee people's jobs and the people that work there. And it was chaos when, when the town took over and I was appointed not, not by, by the council to, to take it over. It was something I didn't want to do. I did not want to do it, but the council appointed me to do it. The council, the ABC store went from being a, a struggling store to the number one and two singles board in the state. And it wasn't necessarily because we switched boards or because I became on the board, but it happened because we had a store manager that was phenomenal and they wouldn't let him do his job. And, uh, he's done a fabulous job. Uh, back in COVID, uh, when Charlotte Mecklenburg were struggling with their sales, Jeff would go to drive a truck up to Raleigh and come back. Uh, and, and we had, uh, we, we had inventory that nobody else had. We prospered. The reason, the reason that was so important is that it, it, it helps the town, uh, out. And he was a, he was a, he was a, a great manager. And, and the old board did not let him manage. Uh, they gave him restrictions of you have to work fifty-five hours a week. If you don't work fifty-five hours, we write you up. Uh, they was constantly telling him he was going to be fired. I'm going to be quiet, but I appreciate it, board. I appreciate y'all having me. I, I won't, I won't accept money for it this time. But I'm, I'm here to make sure that it's a good board and that, uh, uh, we continue to prosper with it. So, thank you very much. But with that being said, let's go to the next, uh, let's go to the, uh, the Board of Adjustments.
I'd like to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, John Hemby's incumbent.
Okay.
And, well, you want to do both of them or just?
You, you, you can.
And then Greg Scarly, Scarwolli? I'm sorry? Okay.
What, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Do each seat. She wants to do individually. Okay, so I nominate Jim or John Hemby.
Okay, do each seat. Okay, so, uh, can, uh, can you? All in favor of John Hemby? Raise your hand. Unanimous. All right, somebody else want to, uh, or somebody want to, Todd?
I'd like to recommend, uh, for the seat five, Greg Skarola. The Board of Adjustments.
All right, Greg Skarola has been nominated. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, um, next is Park and Recreation. Um, we got one seat available. Uh, got three people here. Someone want to make a, Todd?
I'd like to nominate Erica McCall for seat number one on the Parks and Rec Committee.
Oh, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next, um, we, uh, we did have a recommendation from the, um, the chairman of the planning board who, who, uh, recommended, uh,
Larry Duke, yeah.
The, the two incumbents, but, uh, if someone else would like to, to, uh, nominate somebody else, Dennis?
First, I'd like to nominate Meg Fielding for the first position.
Okay.
And I would like to nominate Susan Sumiley for the second position.
Let's, let's do one at a time, so.
Right, one at a time.
We have to do one at a time. So, okay, for the first position is, is Meg Fielding. All in favor? Unanimous.
And I want to make a motion on the next one, Susan Sumiley.
I have another mo, I have another recommendation, sir.
Well, you have, you'll, you, you, you can't do it and we got a motion on the table, so we gotta, gotta do it that way. I'm sorry. Am I not correct?
There's no motion made.
I made a motion.
He did, he ma, he made a motion.
So, recommend, recommendation is not a motion.
I made a motion.
Okay, okay. Is, you tell, you tell me what?
I've seen it done different ways. Um, but how you can do it is do the motion and if it.
Don't you have to, don't you have to nominate somebody, vote on them and then do some?
And then, right, and if it doesn't carry, then you can make us another nomination.
Right, so, correct me if I'm wrong, so, would, do we, we vote on?
Vote on Mr. Gay's recommendation.
Right, I think that's the proper procedure if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Right, I mean, there's, I've seen jurisdictions do it in different ways. I've also seen ballots. I mean, there's multiple ways to do it, but since you've started this way, yes, my recommendation is continue the way you've been doing it. So, vote on Mr. Gay's, um, motion to see if that carries and then if it.
If you get two people up, then, then it.
Right, you can't do it that way.
Okay, so, give me a suggestion. If, it, it seems the council wants to, to do it a different way. So, what, what, give me a suggestion if we don't vote on the first.
She's pretty well said that we vote on my nomination.
Hey, hold, 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 so.
I mean, the way you've been doing it all night is by making a motion. So, I, my recommendation would be continue in that fashion. And if that motion doesn't carry, then someone could make another motion.
Okay, so, we, you vote and if it doesn't carry, then you, okay, then you go to the next. Okay. So, we have a motion on the table, right? We have one and Dennis said Susan Sumile, Sumile, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, well, uh, all deny, all against? We really don't need to do that, do we?
No.
Uh, if there's not, if there's not, so, okay. All right, anybody, another?
I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation for, um, as prescribed by the chairman of the, um, planning board, Joseph Litch, to fill seat number seven on the planning board.
Okay, all in favor? Got three votes, so that, that gets Joseph in there, so. All right, that moves us to, uh, stormwater. Any, uh, and we did, we got a, uh, I think, uh, Todd is our stormwater, um, chairman and he made recommendations.
I'd like to make a recommendation.
Yes.
For Clayton Blackwell.
Okay, the unexpired term to fill.
Unexpired? Unexpired.
True.
All in favor?
Seat number two.
Unanimous.
I'd like to make a recommendation for seat number one, Leo Capania.
All in favor? Unanimous. Any other, one more?
I'd like to make a, can I do it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a recommendation for, uh, Larry Miller for seat number four on the Stormwater Committee Advisory Committee.
All in favor? Unanimous. Are you good? All right, well, I want to say this. I saw all these names here and, uh, we don't always have lots more people than we, than we have seats. And I appreciate everybody that, that, that wanted to do, to do this. There's a lot of good people on here that, that didn't get on the, one of these boards. And I think one of the reasons is, is because you had a lot of incumbents come in, people that's done a good job and they've been it and they served on it. They even served on it when other people, uh, were not, couldn't get enough people to do it. So, I appreciate all of you, uh, putting your name in and doing it and I hope we can get you in next time. Uh, there'd be more seats come up, so, thank you very much and, uh, we'll, let's move on, so. Okay. Brings us to Concrete Center Island along Chestnut Lane, Mr. Hunsinger.
Mayor, Council, um, I just wanted you, uh, to come tonight before you to update you on some discussions I've had with, uh, uh, the town of Stallins and a couple of developers, uh, about the, uh, concrete island that just got, uh, put in a couple of months ago on Chestnut Lane. So, to give you a, uh, an idea of location, in case you don't know, is, uh, if you look on your screen, you've got, uh, the intersection of Potter Road and Chestnut Lane encircled in red. And if you go down, um, the west side, west end of Chestnut, uh, you got Columwood South, which is a subdivision that we, uh, own the roads and that's in our jurisdiction. And then you have Brookhaven, which I'm sure everybody knows, one of our bigger subdivisions on the south side of town. And then, once you go past those two subdivisions, you come, you'll come to a Stallins Development, which used to be a Union County parcel, uh, Union County Incorporated parcel, uh, but in Stallins, they came, they went, this developer went to Stallins and they approved this project called The Courtyards at Chestnut. All right, so, uh, Courtyards Chestnut, right here, as you can see, it's already been platted, uh, in the GIS system in the county. And then the town now, it's, uh, the council approved the, this subdivision, uh, back in June of last year, uh, top above that, uh, right now, it's just called Chestnut Lane Subdivision. They have not, uh, designated a, a name for it yet, but it's right across from it. All right, so, that's the plan that, that Stallins Development is. It's called, uh, Epcon Communities is the owner. As you can see, above, there's the island, uh, that was part of the, the approved plan. So, this is just giving you a visual of, basically, this is an April screenshot, so they pretty much are almost built out. And that gives you a close-up of what that island looks like. And then this is a street view of what it looks like. So, just you get a picture of what I'm talking about. And that, and that photo was done December, as you say, December twenty twenty-two. All right, so, development time, timeline for Stallins was, it was approved around March of twenty twenty-two. Now, it's just based on, uh, the construction drawings dates. That's not something, uh, I don't have a correct date as far as the approval of council. Uh, the construction of the island, I, I figured around July, August of, uh, last year. And obviously, development is about to be completed, like I said. So, so why did they install the island? Well, the developer, I, I've reached out to developer, uh, and, and talked with him. And what had happened was they were supposed to, as they should have, along a road like Chestnut Lane, which gets about eight thousand cars a day, they were, uh, had to put in a left turn lane. That's the DOT requirement. If you're wanting a full access on a road that's more than four thousand cars a day, you have to put in a left turn lane. Well, they went and did a due diligence and tried to get right away. But unfortunately, when they went to try to get right away, uh, to get that left turn lane put in, they ran into a problem in this highlighted in the parcel that you see on your screen. Uh, the person would not, uh, basically didn't want to grant right away, wanted them to incorporate his parcel into the development, which they did not want to do because unfortunately, there's a flood plain that goes through the majority of that property, which obviously economically doesn't make sense. So, he wasn't willing, so they went back to DOT. Well, as long as you put forth a good faith effort to try to get right away, you know, DOT will say, okay, well, you tried your best, put the concrete island in. And that's the reason why they had to put the concrete island in. Uh, the developer didn't want to put the concrete island in because that, that doesn't help him selling houses, uh, as far as that restriction. So, now let's talk about the Chestnut Lane subdivision. That's in the town that's across the street. That timeline right now is it was approved by, yeah, a council, June twenty twenty-two. Uh, they have brought in their design plans. Uh, the first submittal was in March. Uh, and right now, they're in their third submittal with us and they have, uh, NC DOT, NC DOT and NC DQ approvals at this point. All right, that's what this plan looks like. All right, and as you can see, they put their interest right across, which is highlighted right here, their, their interest right across from the Epcon, which makes sense. Uh, because as, as you can see, the parcel is pretty restricted. Most of the time, DOT likes their accesses. If they know a development is coming with another development, they want them parallel to each other. Okay, totally makes sense. Well, that's a problem for us as a town because we want, we don't want the concrete island. Um, and so this is why I started the discussions, um, with Stallins and Epcon because I knew this development was coming and I knew it was going to be a problem for the town. At least in my opinion, it will be a problem with the town in the future. And I'll tell you why. So, so you have the, um, the development in front of you. There's the island in the yellow areas where the island is. Well, the people coming out of that Epcon Community subdivision is not going to go all the way down to the intersection of Chestnut Lane over a road and try to do a turnaround. No, they're going to take the path of least resistance. They're going to go to Columwood South, which is a subdivision we control. And they're going to take that left turn lane, as you see in front of your screen, and do a turnaround in the entrance, in the primary entrance of Columwood South, which is not a safe condition. Well, when our subdivision comes online, well, if that island remains, well, the obvious thing is to do is, you know, go all the way to the roundabout that was built a couple of years ago and go around the roundabout, come back over and go back toward over a road. Well, they're not going to do that. They're going to sit there, take the first intersection they see, which is Red Barn Trail. They're going to get in that left turn lane and do a U-turn on Red Barn Trail, which is not ideal. So, my concern, uh, staff's concern is if we don't, uh, try to, uh, work with these developers at this time, we're going to get enough calls in the future, once all this is built out. Uh, you're going to get calls, future council is going to get calls. And I think Stallins and, and, uh, and Indian Trail, it's going to get stuck with the problem and have to fix it in the future. So, what I'm trying to do, just to let y'all know is, we're having discussions with them, with the, um, and we're trying to do our best to sit there and try to make good on a, unfortunately, not a, a great situ, situation. So, um, we don't, I don't have a timeframe or a plan right now. What we're trying to do is hopefully, um, continue to talk with the developer and the, the Stallins and us and hopefully make a, a situation better. Any questions? I will tell you this, my apologies. Just one more thing, uh, just give you kind of a more, a little bit more information. Stallins approval, uh, basically, we reached out to Stallins about the Epcon and basically asked for permission to talk with Epcon because obviously, we didn't want to step on other agencies' toes. Uh, and so we did that in January twenty twenty-three, just FYI. When we reached out to Epcon, they were, we basically asked them, I said, for Epcon, I asked them, I said, look, is there any way, obviously, you, uh, do you, do you care if the island is removed? Yes, they want the island removed. I said, would you want to help the situation out and, um, uh, you know, contribute some funds or whatever? And they were willing to do that. Well, it took several months for that response to come back and that happened in April. And then, uh, once I knew that they were willing, willing to, uh, contribute, I've started talking to the, our developer to see what occurs. But right now, we don't know how difficult that's going to be to make that transition. And of course, we have to talk to DOT to get those, uh, get their concurrence and stuff. So, uh, it's taking, it's going to take some time, but I wanted to give y'all an, uh, an initial to know that we're having these back, you know, background conversations and we'll come back to you, uh, if it's even viable. But the whole point of staff is, I want to make sure that everyone knows if we can't get anything done and make something of, uh, this situation, a better situation, at least citizens and y'all and everybody would know that the staff did all they could to make it better. But I can't guarantee we're going to make it better. All right, now, I'm sorry, any questions?
Okay, uh, if, you know, you're just looking for an F, kind of an F for your, for our information?
No, yeah, this is just a discussion item. I just wanted to let y'all know this, this is happening behind the scenes. I don't need anything. If y'all have any questions about the presentation, I'll be happy to answer.
Well, I appreciate you, you doing that and, and alerting us. Is there any recommendation that you might have that we do or could do?
No, I, I, no, but I think it's really tied up into the, the DOT, uh, you know, working with DOT and then working with the developer and, you know, it may, it may end up, like I said, we may not be able to do anything about it, uh, which would be unfortunate, but, you know, we're going to try to, uh, do, uh, cross every avenue we can and, and hopefully make it better.
Very good. Well, thank you. And brings us to the Highway seventy-four. Uh, thank you, Todd. Bus service, Mr. McLaurin.
Okay. In your agenda, you'll see a memo that was put together that gives you a little history of this seventy-four bus. You've heard people tonight speak about it. When the county started studying this back in twenty twenty-one, they were looking to Monroe and Indian Trail to provide bus service or to help pay for it. And our position at the time was, we'd given the county a lot of stuff over the years. And our position at the time was, we'd given the county a lot of stuff over the years, and at the same time, they couldn't give us metrics. County was reporting, as I understand it, only about six people a day were riding the bus. And I always thought that was a bit low. So when the county, when the...
Six.
Six.
Started.
Okay, that it dwindled down to six, I believe, was the number. And I kind of felt that was a little bit off. And so, when the county commission made the decision not to fund it, CATS was required to hold a public meeting. They held the public meeting last week. There was one at 6:00 AM that Ms. Deese attended, 7:00 AM that Ms. Deese attended, and at noon. And one of the things we found out, there were about 30 angry people there. A lot of them Indian Trail residents, people who worked, lived in Brandon Oaks, worked at Duke or in the bank. And they talked about how important that bus was, to be able to get on the express bus and then move forward. On June 7th, we got note from the county that if no town is willing to contribute money, the county will not reconsider their decision. I spoke to the county manager, and he said, even if you do contribute money, we don't know that we will, but we just need to know where the towns lie in this. So I asked him, I said, well, how much money we talking about? And he said, well, $18,000, okay? I think, based on my career of working in a number of cities, for us to have a healthy community, we got to get people from point A to point B. And we can build roads all day long, but we have got a number of people that not only live in Indian Trail, but come from outside the county going to Charlotte. And this bus has been a real benefit. On Friday of last week, I called CATS, and I said, what's your ridership been over the last 18 months? And I put that at your desk tonight. And as you'll see, starting in, just picking up, January 2023, it was 853. The next month, 855, March, 967, 968, and 998. So we're seeing an increase. I think if we keep the bus going and we do some more marketing, because I was here for two years and never knew you had an express bus, make it a little bit more prominent, work with CATS, work with the county, I think we can continue to add people on the bus. So I'd like to get your authorization to commit $18,000 in some of those idle funds, interest from idle funds that I talked about about 30 minutes ago, and let the county know we'll contribute up to $18,000.
Mr. Amburgi.
Yes, sir. I work in Rock Hill, South Carolina. They got free bus service for their citizens. I was doing the math, it'll cost the town of Indian Trail $49.32 a month, I'm sorry, a day, excuse me, to get these folks back and forth. I don't know why we wouldn't want to do that. My question would be also, would that bus service stop at the food line?
I think that would be, and we're coming on this kind of at the tail end, but I don't see that changing. Personal opinion, I think we probably need to make it, if we could work with the shopping center owner, a little bit more prominent than where they've got it, a little bit better signage on our end, we could advertise it more. And I think some of your speakers that you've heard tonight could help contribute to it, you know, get attendance up.
Yeah. And I take it CATS would have a, some sort of contract with the shopping center to keep this going?
Yes, I'm not...
And that's the only stop at Indian Trail, I understand?
Yes. And from what I understand is that if we contribute money and they keep it going, then they will not bring a bus into Monroe.
And the county's asking just $18,000?
That's what, that was the figure the county manager gave me.
And it seems like from the people that are riding it, the ones that are still here is, looks like ridership's going up, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, people working and also people that, you know, where the doctors have taken their license from them, you know, older people wound up having to, or people like diabetic, where they can't feel on their feet no more, can't drive. And so, you know, I think it's important that we have some sort of public transportation here. So I think your recommendation sounds great.
One more question, Mike. How many routes would there be in that, did they tell you?
I think right now, there's only two.
Two.
Yeah, so we're still trying to find out some additional information.
So if we probably agreed to that, could we negotiate? I think it was four, someone mentioned before, I think that we need to try to negotiate that if possible.
Yeah.
Timing thing, yeah.
The grant is, of course, with the county and CATS.
Right.
The other thing we found out recently, if you go along Independence Boulevard, do you know where the old bus lane used to be? Well, they're getting ready to reopen that by the spring of next year. They had to close it, actually, several years ago when they were replacing the Hawthorne Bridge. So if, as I understand from Brett Knype of, you know, NC DOT, once that sucker opens, if you're riding on the express bus and everybody else is sitting in traffic, you're in the bus lane. So, but I think it's, I think it's investment next year, and let's see what we can do with it.
I'm in favor of funding that. That's not an issue at all. The thing is, before tonight, I had no idea how many people ride the bus. You were trying to get me to ride it, because I go to Uptown as well. But my question is, how can we, as the town, market this to our residents to let them know where this is? Because I know you mentioned that you had no idea that that was a stop. But the thing is, I think it would be important, if we could, as a government entity, and Abby, I'm looking at you, to really market this, to let people know what's available in terms of the commute, especially as the express lane opens up. I've taken the bus a couple of times, but I've taken it on the express lane.
Yeah.
Sitting in traffic now is not ideal, but the thing is, the expression is going to open up, because the bridge is now, you know, completed.
Yep.
So that's really a focus, I think, we should have as charging you and Abby to really get that, get the wood out there.
Yeah, and, you know, I ride the light rail sometimes, and I'm not sure what the express bus fee is, but I know on the light rail, it's $2.20, okay? If you get to a certain age, 60, 62, it goes down to half of that, $1.10. The other thing I'll tell you, last time I checked, the cost to park a car in Charlotte was over $100 a month.
$200.
Is it $200?
Trade $200.
Rest my case, sir. So if y'all are good with that, do we need a motion, Melanie, or?
I think it'd be a good idea to make a motion.
All right, well, that sounds great. I mean, I'm glad y'all have, now go down to the county and complain, if you would. We're going to call this, make David stand up again, so where he has to ride the bus and stand up, we're going to fill it up again. So I just, just for my benefit, when you said two routes, is that two going one way each day or one in one?
I think it's two in the morning, two in the afternoon.
Okay, very good. All right, with that being said, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, sir. I'll make a motion to approve contributing $18,000 to the bus service to avoid its discontinuation.
Yeah, work with the county, okay.
Unanimous.
All right, let me run through these projects very quickly.
Quiet, please, y'all don't know.
ARPA, the water lines in Emerald Woods, we're on track with it. County's figured out how they want to pay their share. They're doing the design engineering, going to the county commission on July 17th. We're staying in touch with them to kind of make sure it doesn't slip off the schedule. Indian Trail Road Phase 1, you know, that's from Liberty to Gribble. We're waiting for DOT to give us authorization to do the right-of-way acquisition. And I think there's 43 parcels. It is supposed to go to their board this month. If you haven't driven by First Avenue, I'm out there probably twice a week. It's coming along. It's coming along. The road has been flattened and it's dirt and rock and concrete or whatever it is. And Mr. Hunsinger says they expect to start paving next week. We're also got a master plan update for downtown. You see the schedule there. We expect to receive the draft in the next couple of days, and it will then go to the planning board with your planning board members. And then, you see in August, it will come to you. August 15th, it goes back to the planning board, and then we're asking you to approve the final plan with UDO edits on September 12th. They're still working on Chestnut Park Phase 2 with the final construction drawings. Are there any questions? Okay, very quickly, next month, we'll be recognizing the principal of the year, Porter Ridge. So Indian Trail's two for two here. Certificate of Sufficiency, there's some areas out in Brandon Oaks that we're going to be taking care of. Continuation of the public hearing that y'all did tonight. We've got an ARPA grant award, and we've got an extension on some state grants from the State Construction Infrastructure Fund Grant Ordinance. And that's all I got. Finished.
Very good, thank you.
Got, there's no questions.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Oh, I go first, all right. I'm going to say all the good ones, leave nothing for them. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Father's Day is coming up this Sunday, so reach out and congratulate the dads. I'm actually, hopefully, I'll get to see my father on Father's Day. I haven't seen him in quite a while, on Father's Day, so hopefully, we can spend some time together. I do have a question in my comments. Can I ask a question in my comments? Mr. Waterwitz, sir, can I ask you a quick question? Mr. Mayor, I hope I'm not out of order, but I just want to get this for the record.
You've already done it, and that doesn't matter.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission, right? But I've heard a lot of talk about the soccer field and people talking about next year's budget. Mr. Waterwitz, the money's for the soccer field, sir. What fiscal year is this money appropriated for? What year, sir?
Repeat, sir?
The money's for the soccer field. Is it in next year's budget or is it this year's budget, sir?
It's a capital project.
So it's in this year?
It'll go through until the project is completed. It starts this year, yes.
It's not something that's set out in the budget that we just approved?
No. It's in the capital budget, yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Waterwitz. Of that money, sir, how much money of it is bonds approved by voters, if you don't mind?
I know we're using $1.9 million bond that can only be used for either Chestnut or Crooked Creek.
Thank you, Mr.
So that's the first money we have.
Thank you, Mr. Waterwitz. So the thing I'll say is this, when we are here, we have to make sure we have all the facts. We're not going to agree on everything. There's going to be discussion, there's going to be disagreement. Hopefully, we smile and, you know, we get on with it. But the thing is, I sit up here, I take my responsibility very seriously. I represent every person, even people who do not necessarily agree with me. If they have a comment, I'm willing to listen, willing to go along and meet them wherever they are, so that I could see what they're talking about. There's no reason to dismiss anyone in the town. The people in Indian Trail are very good, very good people. I am proud to live here. I enjoy living here. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve here. So I just want to make sure that I mention that. For those who've signed up to serve on the various boards who may not necessarily have got on, still continue to do that. In the past, I've seen it where we've had very few people show up or volunteer to serve. So the fact that there's interest shows that the public is engaged with what's going on in the town. And I appreciate that. Mr. Hunsinger, I want to just recognize the issue that you brought up there. That is an issue where we have two different, you know, municipalities, and there's a potential issue you see coming down the road. And it's good to get ahead of it, so that this council and/or future council can probably get this resolved and therefore not, you know, make the residents who are already living there, not get them angry with the different, you know, the issues that come up from traffic. Staff, as always, I do appreciate all the things that you do. Captain Henke, you and your team, thank you very much. I wasn't able to make it out to Chestnut last week, Saturday, but from what I hear or what I saw, it was a pretty good show, but you and your team being out there, really appreciate that. Hayden, as always, everybody looks to you when there's an event, the things you do, you and your team, congrats, good job on that. And everybody have a very pleasant evening. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pretend Barber?
First off, like McIntyre said, I'd like to wish everybody Happy Father's Day. I was fortunate to have a great father. I'd like to wish all the high school graduates, congratulations. We've been seeing all the pictures on social media and congratulating all of them. I'd like to congratulate and thank David Cohn for the great job doing on the ABC store. I've been here three and a half years, and it's been a great relationship. The store gives money to the town, so you and the board have been doing a great job since I've been here. And also, is, I think it's important, and I appreciate you protecting the town's interests. And as a representative of the town, I think it's important we have someone on the board. And I think a lot of other towns across the state feel that way, too, to protect the town's interests. So thank you. The, I'd like to let everybody know, John Hemby's birthday, I noticed he was on here, is coming up on the 17th. He's on the Board of Adjustment, so if you're on the Board of Adjustment, you see him, tell him Happy Birthday. The Valley Church is having Mother's Morning Out. They're on Rogers Road, starting in July and August. If you want to contact them, it's for ages 2 to 10, and they're doing it on Friday mornings. I'd like to thank Chairman Stony Rushing for pointing out Indian Trail's investment and their fire departments here and the way of the fire trucks. Appreciate him making the time to mention that at the last county commissioner meeting. I'd like to congratulate Tadarius Newkirk and Isaac Sprouse. They both played football at Sun Valley High School. They have committed and signed their letter of intent to play for the Union County Vipers Football Team here. So congratulations to those two young men. They'll be continuing their collegiate football here in Union County. I'd like to give thoughts and prayers out. Cheryl Parker, lived in Indian Trail for years, passed away, so thoughts and prayers to their family. Other than that, wish everybody a great evening, and thank you for coming out.
Councilmember Gag?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I'm glad we finally got the budget resolved. Susan, thanks for your interest. You're very qualified. In my opinion, you're a victim of special interest, and I hope you'll try again. I'm sure that the county commissioners are tickled pink because they got $4.3 million worth of fire trucks, and we continue to pay for another set of fire trucks that's going to go someplace else. So I want you all to be cautious about social media and what you see candidates put on there. Go look at their voting records and see how they voted. Be very careful going home, and thank you for coming. Goodbye.
Councilmember Amburgi?
Yes, I want to congratulate Olivia Reardon on being the grand marshal for our July 4th parade. And also, every councilman up here voted for the fire trucks. God bless everyone. Happy Father's Day. Have a good night.
Councilmember Buholick?
All right, I'll be short again. I do want to say congrats to all the grads. My exchange students are at the graduation right now, so hopefully, I'll be able to catch the tail end of it. Hayden, y'all did a great job at Family Fun Day. It was extremely hot, and y'all worked extremely hard, but everyone seemed to be very happy, and the fireworks were definitely wonderful. It was a great show, and I think you keep it up. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers and some of the cool events that are coming up. One of my favorites of the year is the National Night Out, and I always don't adopt a cop, so if anyone wants to adopt one of our fine sheriff, our fine officers, please, contact me. Other than that, have a nice night and drive home safe.
Mayor Kunk.
Okay, I also want to thank everybody who signed up for the boards, who got on the boards, and for those who did not. And I have a list of names right here. Susan, I'm sorry you didn't get on a board. I feel like you show up for meetings, and I love to see people who come to meetings end up on a board, because you showed interest in the town. So the problem is, years ago, we couldn't get people to get on boards. Now, we've got too many people that want to get, not too many, but people who want to get on boards. David, and I can never pronounce his last name, also was who comes, and he made a statement about, what's David's last, do you know it? Very talk tonight. He was someone else that I felt real strongly about getting on a board. Of course, I didn't get a vote, so I feel badly. I feel badly for the people who didn't get on there, but that's all I can say about that. I'd like to also say that Olivia, tonight, man, this town's a good town. To bring her here and to do, and the things that she's gone through, and she's going to lead our parade, man, it makes me feel good. It really does. And to think that this may be something that she remembers for the rest of her life is something else, and let's hope it's a very long life. You know, let's just hope it works out that way. And also, for our very own Indian And also for our very own Indian Trail teacher who, I'm so happy that she's here and has done the things that she's done, straight from Indian Trail, 22 years old. And I had to ask her how old she was, but is that not amazing to be the Teacher of the Year in Union County at 22 years old? What a bright future she has. And I'm very thankful to Nicole, I think it's Branhurst. So anyway, I'd like to help, I'd like to thank all the fathers in this room because without all the fathers, there wouldn't be us in the room or people in the world. Happy Father's Day. My father's long been passed away, but I still remember him and I know that for those that have fathers that passed away, it can still be a Happy Father's Day. So Happy Father's Day. I will say something about my father. My father would have been 119, 30, been 110 years old this year. And my father came over and this is what I said at the, at the, the other day when we were at the VFW. Thank the VFW because my dad was a German Jew and he came over and if it wasn't for the VFW and it wasn't for all the people that defended this country, I wouldn't be here. He came over in the mid 1930s when Hitler had taken power and he was very lucky to get out, came married a North Carolina girl and, you know, started a family. So anyway, I'm very thankful. I'm very thankful for you guys. I'm very thankful for, I live here in Indian Trail and I love what I do here. And God bless y'all and I hope you show up for the next meeting. So can I get a, to close us out today, a motion?
Post it to adjourn.
Y'all in favor? Unanimous.